All right. So, look, we're in a revolutionary situation right now. And I'm not referring to Occupy Wall Street, per se, although that's a reflection of the revolutionary moment. As Stephanie just said, what you have is the collapse of the entire transatlantic banking system. And this is much bigger than when the Berlin Wall came down, than when the communist system went bankrupt in the East. That was part of the planet. But what you have now is the transatlantic. The euro could disappear any minute. We have information that many European countries are secretly printing their own sovereign currencies because you'd be insane to not be prepared for the euro to disappear. And therefore, what you have is the death of a system. And you have, in the American population, the recognition that Wall Street, the city of London, that somehow they are primarily responsible for this, which you see in the theme of the occupations. We are the 99%. The people do have a sense that it's 99% versus a little teensy minority who seems to be controlling everything. The danger is also what Stephanie referenced. It's a little surprising. We had very similar ideas on certain things, which is this question of the Congress of Cultural Freedom, which ran a deliberate onslaught. This is an actual organization. It's called the Congress for Cultural Freedom. And their concern was that if you wanted to have world fascism, like they almost succeeded in the '30s because it wasn't just Hitler. It was Hitler, Mussolini, Franco, Vichy France. And you had an attempt to assassinate Franklin Roosevelt before he took office. And then if people know the story of Smedley Butler, he exposed and attempted coup by a certain treasonous faction against FDR after he came in because they wanted the U.S. to support the fascist imperialist machine in Europe. And they said the difficulty was what Stephanie referenced, this American identity, that Americans don't fundamentally believe in hierarchy. They don't, we don't think that people are superior because of their bloodline. We don't think that you should be, you know, shine shoes because your grandfather did. And therefore, people responded to the leadership of Franklin Roosevelt. And they trusted him when he took on Wall Street and were willing to back up a certain kind of difficult fight in difficult conditions. So what was done very deliberately, and one of the organizers of this was a guy named Henry Luce, who was the owner and founder of Time Magazine. Time Magazine had two or maybe three times in a row Mussolini on the cover as man of the year. And basically, what they said is, how do we destroy this American identity? And what they did were massive projects of rock music, drugs being introduced particularly in the Ivy League colleges, sex with everything, not just everyone, everything, sex everywhere. And then perhaps the most destructive, two aspects, the environmentalist movement, which became a movement not to protect the environment, but to say that human beings are some kind of evil, cancerous tumor on the planet. And there's too many, and we should stop consuming. And the idea of so-called democracy. And I haven't heard LaRouche's remarks tonight. We have on Tuesday evenings. He has a meeting with our intelligence staff. But I understand he had a lot of very harsh words for this Occupy Wall Street because of their democratic principles. And I can tell you myself, I was at many of the General Assembly meetings in Manhattan before the occupation and since. And I was at a meeting of the Demands Committee on Sunday night. And there are a lot of people, because it is a very broad movement, so it's not a uniform anything. There's a lot of people who are saying, we should have demands, we should have specific demands. And, but as a whole, they sort of decided not to. And even the Demands Committee got reduced to the silly kind of discussion, which is, what can we come up with, which has no content to it, so everyone will agree on it? And that's where you see the problem of democracy. When you're in a war, you want to identify the enemy and you want to go after the enemy. And in this case, the enemy is London and Wall Street, something like the Glass-Steagall Act, which many people in there support, but they're not going for the jugular to get this done. Now, happily, because we are in a revolutionary moment where so many people do stand to lose everything, you have a situation like what was described by Shelley. And this is from his defense of poetry, which I think is very profoundly beautiful and very true, where he writes, "The most unfailing herald companion and follower of the awakening of a great people to work a beneficial change in opinion or institution is poetry. At such periods, there is an accumulation of the power of communicating and receiving intense and impassioned conceptions, respecting man and nature. The person in whom this power resides may often, as far as regards many portions of their nature, have little apparent correspondence with that spirit of good of which they are the ministers. But even whilst they deny and abjure, they are yet compelled to serve that power, which is seated on the throne of their own soul." So he's saying, in a revolutionary moment, that people who don't even particularly seem likely or look likely to be heroes or to be profound leaders somehow find themselves communicating very profound ideas. And that's what happens in a revolutionary moment. And it also means that people, we have found going to the occupation, although people are part of a really screwy culture, that people are very, very hungry for heavy ideas. People want to talk about why there's not too many people on the planet, why the environmentalist movement is a fraud, why we need Glass-Steagall, why we should have nuclear power. People want to think. They're hungry for thinking on a higher level than what they're typically allowed to think about in this sick culture of ours. Next. And this also reflects a mass strike. This is a quote from Rosa Luxemburg, who was an activist in Russia in communist socialist revolutions. And she wrote a paper, she was a brilliant economist, and she wrote a paper on the mass strike. And it is astounding, her insight into how this works. She writes, "If, therefore, the Russian revolution teaches us anything, it teaches above all that the mass strike is not artificially made, not decided at random, and not propagated, but that it is a historical phenomenon which at a given moment results from social conditions with historical inevitability. And the solution, which a revolutionary period makes of this apparently invincible difficulty, consists in the circumstances that such an immense volume of mass idealism is simultaneously released, that the masses are insensible to the bitterest sufferings. In the storm of the revolutionary period, even the proletarian is transformed from a provident paterfamilas demanding support into a revolutionary romanticist, for whom even the highest good, life itself, to say nothing of material well-being possesses but little in comparison with the ideals of the struggle." So when you're in a mass strike, no one owns it. And she described in this, which I didn't cover, but she said, "This is different than if you have a strike for a day, if a labor union declares a strike and it's a specific thing, shorter hours, benefits, or whatever it is. That is not a mass strike for which people might be prepared to die." Like what you saw in East Germany, where people thought the tanks were going to be rolled in, it was going to be just like Tiananmen Square. And instead of running away, more people came out than was ever expected, and the Berlin Wall came down. And what you have is something similar. What happened in 1989, and I think a lot of people here are old enough to have some memory of that. And it really was extraordinary. And you saw the culture really elevated because what happened in Eastern Europe as they were holding candlelight vigils is that people wanted to go to plays by Friedrich Schiller. And people may know the famous play by Schiller about William Tell, who lived under this oligarchical governor who wanted everybody to bow to his hat on a post in the middle of the town. And Tell was asked by people who were being oppressed, "Can you help? We want to make a revolution against this guy." And he said, "Oh, no, no." You know, like the people said, "I'm not political. Oh, no, 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 I'm not going to get involved in this. I don't do politics." And what happened was Tell goes by the hat with his son. And just at that moment, the governor comes up. And of course, Tell has not bowed to the hat. And the governor says, "I know who you are, and you're going to have to go to prison. But I hear you're the best archer in the universe. So you make your son stand on that tree over there and shoot an apple off of his head." And Tell said, "Absolutely not, this would be terrible." And his little boy is saying, "Oh, Daddy, what are you afraid of? I know you can do it." You know, so Tell takes two arrows, shoots, hits the apple. And the governor says, "Okay, you don't have to go to jail right now, but I want you to tell me what was the second arrow for." And Tell said, "Well, if I had killed my son, the second arrow was for you." In which case, the governor said, "Okay, off to prison." At any rate, this play became like a popular drama for the movement in East Germany. And I don't think that they particularly had a classical culture before the events of 1989. But somehow, if you're preparing to die, if you're preparing to say, "I'll stand in front of a tank," then you want something profound. And that's why the music of that revolution ended up being Beethoven's Night Symphony, even though Pink Floyd went over there with his, "The wall," you know, "Don't need no educate," whatever. He went over there and tried, and no one was really interested because people wanted something that touched their humanity. And that's what you have. Now, what unfortunately occurred with that revolutionary moment is you had Maggie Thatcher and Bush Senior in office. And I remember very vividly Bush Senior on television as you had, the wall came down. And he always whined. I don't know if you remember. He had this really whiny voice. And he said, "You won't see me dancing on the Berlin Wall." And in fact, he and Maggie Thatcher did everything they could. Yeah, he said that. And they did everything they could to stop the reunification of Germany. And the British spread all these lies. "Oh, the Nazis are going to come back, and you can't have this." And so what did they do? They launched two wars, the Balkans and Iraq, Desert Storm. And then what they did to cripple Germany is they set up the euro. And that's where it came from. Because Germany was the industrial powerhouse of Europe. And the British had their balance of power game. You've heard Henry Kissinger use that term. And they did not want an East-West partnership. And Lyndon LaRouche was in prison at the time where Bush Senior had placed him, calling exactly for this kind of an East-West collaboration, which would have brought about really a global renaissance. And instead, that was stopped. And what you had was actually hideous because not only did they start these wars, but they decided to use Eastern Europe for slave labor, for looting, to set up a black market. And the population of Russia in the '90s shrunk by about a million people per year because of death from alcoholism and syphilis related to prostitution. It was a totally desperate, horrible situation. So at any rate, now what we're facing...
Excuse me. I'm not sure I understand that. They stopped or did not want the reunification of both Germanies?
Correct.
And for that, they perpetrated all those wars and stuff? I don't understand. What were they afraid of?
What I just said.
Of the reunification? What was there so much to be afraid of?
The industrial power of Germany. Because World War I was started. I'll just make a slight diversion, and we'll take the rest of the questions at the end. In 1876, you had the Centennial Exposition in Philadelphia. And no head of state from any other country had ever come here before that because it was so controversial to stand up to the British Empire that people didn't want to be caught with this renegade republic, the United States, unless they could see that we were going to be successful. And the first head of state to visit us was the Emperor of Brazil, who came to the Centennial Exposition. But there were scientists from Russia, from many European countries, and they were blown away, not just by our technology, but that we, you know, we just had completed the transcontinental railroad. But what also blew them away is that the average worker in Philadelphia had indoor plumbing. That is, we had the highest standard of lifting in the world after only 100 years. And they said, "We should make this a model." So you had people leave that exposition and try to do things like the Berlin to Baghdad railroad, which would have opened up trade between Europe and Asia. And the British created Lawrence of Arabia to blow up all those railroads. And then what you...
War?
Yes, that's what they did. And then they set up World War I to make sure, again, that you would not have an East-West collaboration. And the United States got into that war on the wrong side. We should not have been involved in World War I at all. It was a crazy setup. And Germany was blamed and made to pay incredible reparations after every bit of cattle and railroad was taken out of the country. So they had no means of production. And they were told, "You pay for this. And then you know what happened with 1923, the hyperinflation." So what they did was they just started printing money because they had no production, destroyed themselves, destroyed the currency, and it did pave the way for Hitler later. But the fear of Germany was that they were an industrial powerhouse, and you didn't want them working with Russia because then what would be the power of the city of London?
Oh, so that was it? Just so the balance of power would stay with London?
Yeah.
That's it?
How about the French? The French were just as much a fall as the British were.
In World War I?
In World War I.
Yeah, sure.
Because they made demands also long ago.
No, they did, exactly. The French were in on the reparations business. At any rate, so that was the game. Now, so you think about what happened to Russia, you think about the destruction of Eastern Europe. What we're looking at right now with the transatlantic system collapsing is worse than that. And one statistic I read the other day, which was really horrifying, but gives you a sense of how quickly things can go into a dark age, is that apparently Americans who have been foreclosed upon have a life expectancy which is 10 years shorter than the rest of the population, which makes a lot of sense. If people are displaced, if they're living in crowded housing, if they're totally stressed out, you can see how these kind of things would shorten someone's life expectancy. And now they actually have a statistic on it. And what you've had in the United States since the assassination of both Kennedys and then the cover-up is that we've stopped thinking of the future. And that is the essence of a credit-based economy. That is, the idea of credit, the idea that Alexander Hamilton had, is that money itself has no intrinsic value. And you can think of that if you go to the moon in a spaceship and you get there and you have a suitcase full of hundred-dollar bills. I mean, unless you want to eat it or something. It doesn't have, it's not going to help you. You want the means of existence. You want water, you want oxygen, you know. There are certain things that you need. So Hamilton, who came from the Caribbean, who was a witness to the evils of slavery, came here and he said, "We, it's not money. It's a question of the future. Are we going to build canals? Are we going to build roads? How are we going to finance it?" And he knew that the British were intent upon breaking up the country. So one of the first things he did is that he said the national government was going to take in all of the debt of the states. And you can imagine, this was a huge controversy because some states had busted their rear ends to back up the American Revolution. They had a lot of debt. Other states hadn't done all that much, and they didn't have much debt. And they thought it was really rotten that you were going to have a government say that we were going to take all this debt. And a lot of people said, "Well, look, we just had a revolution. Why should we pay? Why don't we just not pay?" And Hamilton said, "No, if we don't pay, no one will ever trust us. So we have to pay. We have no production. We've just been through a war. We had a ragtag army." And what he did was he converted this debt, in effect, to bonds. And some of it, they said, "We're not going to pay anything for 10 years." Some of it, they said, "We're going to schedule over many years at low interest and so on." And this was then used to actually fund the development of the United States. It was completely brilliant. But you had to recognize that the money itself had no value. And you had to think in terms of the future. And I would say that the last president we had who actually thought in terms of the future was Kennedy. If you think about the space program, and at the end, I'm going to play a speech by Kennedy that he gave at the opening of a dam in South Dakota, which is just an incredible thing because you hear how much he thought in terms of a mission for the nation and the future. So what's happening is you have now happily a revolt, a real revolt, against this bankrupt, transatlantic, slavery, free-trade system. And it's coming from Russia and China. And in Russia, there was a huge shift against the British Empire. And I think a lot of Americans missed it because the media here is so rotten. And people don't really understand what's going on in Russia. But I'll just say what occurred. And then we're going to watch a video, which is really going to make it very clear. You had, you have sort of a triumvirate in Russia, which is Putin, who is right now Prime Minister, Medvedev, who's the president, and Yakunin, who is the head of the Russian railroads. Yakunin has publicly spoken of his friendship with Lyndon LaRouche. He was asked by someone, "How come the Russian railroads didn't go bankrupt like everything else?" And he said, "Well, I'll tell you. My good friend Lyndon LaRouche sat down with me, and he said, 'Vladimir, this system is going to crash.' And I believed him and conducted the business of the Russian railroad according to this. So that's why we're not bankrupt.'" So they have a very ambitious agenda, which is very much like Abraham Lincoln, to develop Russia as a nation. And Putin and Medvedev, and it's typical KGB games. They had the whole world thinking that they were fighting each other. But it was a trick. And they shocked the world by holding this gigantic convention on September 24th and announcing that they had made an agreement that Medvedev, because you can't be in office for more than two terms consecutively, but you can come back in. So it was a question whether Medvedev was going to run for president again or not. And he said, "No, I'm going to run for Prime Minister. Putin will run for president." So they shocked the world because they clearly had it all worked out from the beginning. And then Kudrin, who is the Finance Minister of Russia and who is a total British Wall Street puppet. I mean, the guy, he was from the London School of Economics. And his view is that Russia should be like the continent of Africa, that it should just shut down development. And I'm not saying Africa wants to shut down development. It's been imposed, right? So he was prepared to open up Russia to be looted by the British. He said, "We should shut down all this high-tech stuff, shut down the railroads. What we're going to do is export raw materials." And Kudrin was LaRouche's biggest enemy in Russia. So what happens? Kudrin comes to New York. He's in New York when they make this wild announcement, and everyone suddenly realizes they've been tricked by the President and Prime Minister of Russia. And Kudrin, in New York, out of the country, comments that he disagrees with the Russian government policy and he's not going to be part of a new government. And then what happens is he's called on the carpet by Medvedev, the president, on national Russian television, not privately. And I'm going to show you this because it really is striking.
You all know that the election campaign has kicked off. It's a difficult challenge for both the state system and individuals. I suppose it also has an impact on people's emotional state. Perhaps this is why there was a whole number of statements made recently, both in our country and abroad, in the United States, for instance. In fact, there's an entire class of people who, for some reason, tend to travel across the ocean to make their important statements. Mr. Kudrin, who's present here, announced with great pomp recently that he doesn't intend to work in the new government and that he has some strong differences with the current president, particularly on the issues of government spending, including defense expenditures. I'd like to say a few things on this issue in this context. First, there is no such thing as the new government. No one has been handed an invitation to join. But the old government is here. It has been established by me as the president, and it is answerable to me. And it will operate under my guidance according to the Constitution. This government implements the policies of the president, and all the key decisions are signed by the government, which means, of course, that all matters of government spending, including defense allocations, and in fact, on all sorts of issues, carrying the signature of the Finance Minister. I think Mr. Kudrin could have made his views known at an earlier date. He had the chance to make a decision about his political future and, in fact, join the right-wing forces. They invited Mr. Kudrin, but he turned down the invitation out of some other considerations evidently. Be that as it may, I'd like to say that the statements made in the United States were inappropriate and inexcusable. Secondly, there is the issue of discipline and subordination in the government. Mr. Kudrin, if you don't agree with the president's policies, and it is the president's policies that the government implements, you have only one choice. And you know yourself what that is. You should tender your resignation. So I would ask you right here, if you think your view on the economic agenda differs from those of the president, you are welcome to write a letter of resignation. Naturally, I expect you to give an answer here and now. Are you going to resign?
Mr. President, indeed, there are differences between you and me in some issues. But I will make a decision regarding your proposal after I consult with the Prime Minister.
You know what? You can consult anyone you like, including the Prime Minister. But as long as I am president, the decisions such as this one are up to me.
You asked me to make a decision. I told you what my decision is.
I repeat again, you will have to make up your mind quick. You'll have to tell me today. Either you tell me that there are no differences, as you call them, or, if those differences do exist, I see no other option than for you to resign. Although, of course, I would hate to do that. And one last thing. Any person who questions the policies of the president or the government, and in fact, any person who has different plans for the future, is free to contact me through an appropriate request. But one should do that in an open manner. Any kind of irresponsible chatter, well, I will have to put a lid on that. Until May 7th, 2012, I'll be the one making all the necessary decisions. I hope this is clear to everyone.
So within two hours, they went into Kudrin's office, packed up all his stuff, put it out in the hall, and he was out of there.
Excuse me. You know what's funny is RT Russia Today. I find they're more honest about what's going on here in America than the American media. I gotta watch RT to find out what's going on.
Yeah, they're all so more honest about Russia, apparently. I mean, this is pretty wild. So a lot of people in Russia wish that Americans would return the favor with respect to Obama. At any rate, but so this coup, it is a coup. It's a coup against the British Empire. It's a coup against this looting. And they just said, "No, we're not suicidal. We're not going to be a third-world country, and we're not going to go along with this. And we're working with China." And Putin was just given the Confucius Award in China. And he was there about a week ago with a delegation of 180 people. And the kind of agreements they are working on are absolutely spectacular. High-speed rail, development of Siberia, nuclear power. I mean, it's absolutely huge across the board. And the United States absolutely should be involved in this, and they want us involved in it. in it. And furthermore, if the United States does not get involved in this, it will fail. So this is really the issue before the United States. Are we gonna go for a dictatorship to crush the population while we try to bail out this transatlantic bankrupt system by killing off all the elderly, poor, and everyone else? Or are we gonna go with this trans-Pacific orientation, which is very much, it's American, it's like Kennedy, it's like FDR, it's like Lincoln. That's what they're doing. So to just remind you, I wanted to review a few things that have happened over the last years. Yes, now here we have the German Chancellor in New Year's Eve of, well, 2002, December 31st going into 2003, and the Chinese Premier Zhu Rongji, that's Chancellor Schroder. Where are they? They're on a magnetically levitated train, the first commercial train from Shanghai to the Shanghai Airport, which makes a trip that's 90 minutes in rush hour traffic in less than half an hour, and the train gets up to about 268 miles per hour. And when they did the video, they, you can see sort of the edge of it right here, they had a vase with flowers and water on the table in front of them, yes?
It takes about seven and a half.
Seven and a half minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, seven and a half minutes by train to make a trip that was 90 minutes in rush hour traffic. Okay? And it's so smooth that they could have a vase of flowers on their little table in front of them. Now, next, the way this works, which is really fascinating, magnetically levitated rail, and this is the Siemens model, which is what they used in China, you have magnets here, and everyone knows when you push magnets against each other the wrong way, you get this resistance. So the train does not touch the track, which is why there's so little friction and why this is so smooth. It just says, "Train levitates on and is driven by electromagnetic propulsion system. The electric current in the track and magnets generate a traveling field which levitates and propels the train." And it wraps, you can see this wraps around the track, so it actually cannot derail. And it goes up to, I think the highest speed they went on this is about 310 miles per hour. Okay, by train. Now, think about that, in the United States, high-speed rail is 90 miles an hour. I mean, that is, it's pathetic, it's pathetic. Now, do I have a picture of a train next to something else? I think I don't. No, go away, get rid of that. Okay, now, here's the really, really exciting thing. So rail at 268 miles per hour is not bad. That means you could go from New York to DC in an hour, take you half an hour to get to Philadelphia. It's electric, it's quiet, it's clean, it's excellent. But what they're now looking at is vacuum tubes, because the only friction for this train is air. So the question is, if you put a train like this in an evacuated tunnel, what speed could you get? They're thinking 1,000 miles an hour. And they just did their first test, and the train went 745 miles an hour. So you're now talking about technology where you could go from New York to California an express route by train, New York to San Francisco, and you could do it in three hours by rail. Or maglev rail, not the old-fashioned kind with wheels.
What is this called? This is in high speed? What is this?
Well, there's two kinds of high speed. They have the high speed in France, the high-speed train, which, and the Chinese have a lot of those too, where you specially weld the track so it's extremely smooth and you get very high speeds. But this is called mag, it's explicitly magnetically levitated rail. And that really will be, the other thing apparently about these trains is because of their design, they're very adept at going up hills, so for freight and things like that, they're really looking at this.
Is our country looking into this? You know about it?
We know about it, but, I mean, it came out of the space program. So it's our technology, but again, we foolishly, we're not, we're not doing it. Yeah. And the Russians really, you'll see when I get to some of the maps, they really want us to be involved in this, they really, they really do. Now, all right, here's the next, oh, and, oh, the other thing I was gonna say about the train. No, this is really fun. If it takes three hours to California, you realize you would get to California at the time that you left. Which is a lot quicker than the cross-broad. It's faster than the cross-broad. All right. Now, this, this is really exciting. The Russian Spectre R Space Telescope, they just sent this up with a rocket in July, and just now it's opened this dish here. And it gives you resolution that's equivalent of having a satellite dish that's 30 times the diameter of the Earth. Its resolution is 1,000 times more precise than the Hubble telescope. And they said that it's precise enough that if you could see California from New York City, if you got up really high above New York and looked at California, you could count grains of sand on the beach. So it's a spectacular instrument, it's a phenomenal breakthrough. And what they're gonna do is start looking at other galaxies where we haven't been able to determine that much about them, now we will have immensibility. And the next bottleneck is actually a problem of data. If we can quickly get enough antennae up to be able to take in all of the information that this extraordinary telescope is going to be sending us. Now.
I'm sorry, I have a question. I mean, I know you're still in your meditation. You've been down at Akapal, Wall Street, right?
Yeah.
Are you talking to people down there about your ideas? Like, because I mean, I realize a lot of people are not aware of what's going on. But I mean, when you go down there, did you talk to them about all this stuff?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, and they wanna know. I mean, most people love these ideas.
No, because my concern with that is that, you know, they keep saying, "Well, what do they want, what do they want, what do they want?", you know, and, you know.
Well, that's, I know, and that's, we should, we should take this part up at the end.
Okay.
Okay. But anyway, now look, this is the world as if you were on the North Pole. And it's really a much better way to think about it, because what Putin has been saying recently, for example, is if we wanna trade, why don't we, you know, go across the Arctic? Why do we do these crazy routes around the Suez Canal and everything else? And they just had the maiden voyage of a major Danish ship escorted by a Russian icebreaker, which did travel through the Arctic, and it made the trip in about half the time of shipping something around the Suez Canal. This is the Bering Strait, and this has been a proposal, actually since the Centennial Exposition in Philadelphia, which is that somehow we should have a connection between the United States, between Alaska and Russia. It's really only about 40 miles, and there's a little island in the middle.
That's right.
So, and this would totally change our orientation, especially if you had trains going 1,000 miles per hour under here. I mean, we would have such a commerce with Asia. And, you know, one of the things that some of the, I forget which Russian, who's the one who said it was like 11? A rail is like 11? That makes, that makes everything rise? I forget who it was. Was it Bitter? That's what I was saying, right? He said a railroad because it goes through so many different cultures. What happens is it elevates everybody, that everyone becomes better because of the cultural, yeah. Yeah, and so this, Putin really, really is trying to get us to do this. Next, here's a different view of it, so you can see the Bering Strait Tunnel there. And, just a minute, I have to see. Okay. Anyway, now, what the Russians are doing, you can go to the next, is they are very seriously working on this. Here's where Alaska would be, and there's a little city here which doesn't have a name on this map, it's called Ualyn. But the Russians just built, Yakutsk did not, even though it has 260 million, no, 260,000 people, it had no rail connection to the main Trans-Siberian railway, they just completed that. Now they're building this, and they're gonna go to Magadan, and then they're planning to build up to Ualyn. So the Russians are just going full steam ahead, they're confident, I guess, that we're gonna come to our senses. And they are building this right to the Bering Strait. Now, yeah, and it, I mean, you could...
That's pretty good to Europe.
Right, you could take a train from New York to Paris, that's right, you could go the other way. Now, this is really a challenge, it is like going to outer space because of the question of the permafrost. You can show the next one. And this is heavy, okay? This really dark, dark purple area, that's frozen for more than 500 meters deep. This is only from 300 to 500 meters of permafrost. This area is maybe up to 25 meters of permafrost, and it can melt in the summer. So it's very difficult, and this is why, and apparently, because of the electromagnetic field created by the Earth's rotation and so on, a lot of raw materials and minerals are concentrated at the poles. So Siberia is known to have potentially the greatest abundance of raw materials anywhere on the planet, and no one is able to get to them because they haven't figured out how to deal with this permafrost next. And one of the other things is what happens when the permafrost melts, that you could have the terrain change totally radically. So from winter to summer, the ground you stand on may be 13 feet different than what it is. And the question is, how do you build rail through this kind of area? And what the Chinese have pioneered with some, going through some really mountainous areas in Tibet, is they figured out that what you have to do is build an elevated track which has very deep concrete and iron rods that go into the rock that's under the permafrost, so that the train is going up a good distance above the ground, and the bottom is not ice, but it's actual rock. So this is one of the technologies that they figured out in order to be able to actually have safe rail here. And then also, you have to regulate the temperature of the track, because you're going through extreme temperatures, and you wanna keep the track actually at freezing temperatures, and they have to cool the track. And then the other thing, and it's not so much in Siberia, which I think is relatively flat, but in parts of China and elsewhere, there are these really, really tall mountains where you don't have any oxygen. So you have to have pressurized railcars, just like you do in an airplane. So these are all things that they're actually building, they're actually working on. And as Franklin Roosevelt understood, and this is why I must say, I hate to use the word "infrastructure," LaRouche has said we should not use that word anymore, because when you say "infrastructure," people think of a bridge or a dam, and he said, "No, what you really wanna think of is platform."
Like what?
Platform. That when Franklin Roosevelt launched the Rural Electrification Administration, he said every farmhouse is gonna have electricity.
Right.
Right?
Exactly. Yes, the word, it covers all life, it didn't, right?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, how technology has its own...
No, no, exactly. And the point is, that imagine if everyone doesn't, you never go forward, right? If half the people have refrigerators and half of them don't, if half of them can read at night and half of them can't...
That's right.
Then your whole economy is held down to the lowest common denominator, right?
That's right.
And that's why you don't say "infrastructure," you say "platform," because you want the whole thing to move to a higher level. So at any rate, what, therefore, you don't wanna have a situation where they go on this train that goes 1,000 miles per hour through the Bering Strait Tunnel, and you get to the Alaska side, and you have to get off and get on a bicycle. We shut down all fossil fuels, and we don't have nuclear power. That would sort of stop the progress. And therefore, what we're, what we're saying that we have to do in terms of getting Obama somehow contained, or if he's not physically out, contained, so he's not making policy and he's not a candidate. Democrats should have some other candidate, but anyway, contain him, so that we can get Glass-Steagall passed, and we can build Nawapa, and I wanted to review Nawapa. This is the North American Water and Power Alliance, which was designed by Parsons, the people who built the Hoover Dam. And it was just about ready to go in 1964. They had done the feasibility studies, they'd done the engineer, they had blueprint upon blueprint upon blueprint, bills of material, it was all laid out and got blocked. But this is just a general map, where that area where you have 1, 2, and 3 up in Alaska, down to 4 in Canada, this part of our continent gets about 25% of all the rainfall on the whole continent. It's massive amounts of rain. And most of it hits the mountains and just goes back into the ocean, and it never gets used. So what they said is, why not divert 25% of it? The first major reservoir would be the Susitna Reservoir up there, which, right now, the governor of Alaska, they're trying to build it, and they're getting absolutely no backup from the federal government on this. But that would be the beginning, and then what you do is you bring the water into the Rocky Mountain Trench. The hub of the whole entire thing is here, 7, which is the Sawtooth Mountains, the Sawtooth Mountain in Idaho, and the water there would be at 50, 250 feet above sea level. It's a massive engineering endeavor. And from there, then everything else is gravity, and you're looking at bringing water into the Great Lakes, which are having a lot of pollution problems because you don't have enough fresh water flowing through. Bringing water, you know how they have all these fights in California between the farmers and the cities about who's gonna get the water, you could alleviate that. The Great American Desert, where we are now foolishly depleting the Ogallala Aquifer, the underground water which doesn't get replenished from rainfall. And I'll tell you, they're so crazy, because we don't think of doing these kind of things anymore. They're actually uprooting the trees in Kansas. We've got two separate reports from people there, the trees that FDR planted to stop the Dust Bowl. They're saying the trees are using too much water.
Oh, my God.
And they're uprooting the trees. I mean, is this the, I guess, the government or whatever in Kansas? I mean, it's really, it's so insane, because they have these huge water shortages, and they're saying, "Well, we need the water for whatever."
Well, that sounds like a government error.
Yeah. No, it's just nuts. So this thing is actually back, it's a topic of major discussion, and if you go on our website, you'll see, one of the things that we've done is put together a builders committee. We're finding all the experts all over the country and even internationally in hydraulics, tunnel building, nuclear power, all the things that would be required. We'll just go through a little of that, so you get a sense what a driver this would be. What do I have next?
Now, they had that all laid out, you said all the planes, everything?
It was all ready to go, all ready to go. Concrete, we don't even know how much concrete would go into this thing. And the Hoover Dam, it was 4.36 million cubic yards. And just to give you a sense, Lake Mead holds 38 million acre-feet of water, Nawapa would have reservoirs for 4 billion acre-feet of water. It's an order of, it's orders of magnitude greater. 4.36 million cubic yards of concrete is enough concrete to pave a highway from New York to San Francisco that's 16 feet wide. So what we're talking about for this is just huge. Next, steel, tons and tons and tons of steel. One of the big disputes in Alaska is that apparently, because we have so much shut down our industry in the United States, and because of the stupid free trade, a Chinese company underbid all the American companies to build the Susitna Reservoir, they bid for 20% less. So we're gonna import steel from China, I mean, it just seems so crazy to build this. I mean, we could really be gearing up everything and producing it here. Next, this, that giant thing is a drill bit, okay? Imagine how fast that has... Imagine how fast that has to spin to go into rock. And that's just part of what we'd have to produce to build these things. Next. Obvious, earth-moving machines, tons of that.
You know, you should go around to all these industrial war complex companies and show them this. Maybe we'd get their minds for it for all these wars. If they knew that 'cause they're funny doing this, maybe they wouldn't be interested in creating wars.
Yeah, right.
You know? Seriously.
No, and we are, actually, we are talking to them and some of our basement team who are the experts in this have been invited to give special presentations to Army engineers and people like that on this project.
Yeah, but you need to go to Boeing and you need to go to Engersold Band-
Lockheed Martin, I know, yes.
Caliber.
Okay, and that's, and this is the IFR, Integral Fast Reactor Plant. Again, the United States, the technology was designed here. This is a high-temperature reactor. It uses liquid sodium, okay? Liquid metal, very high temperature. And what that means is it's the speed of the neutrons in the thing. So that what these plants do is they use what is now nuclear waste for fuel. And right now, apparently in the US, I was told by a scientist who works on these, we have enough waste that we have foolishly buried that we could power, we could meet all of our energy needs for 1,000 years using that waste with these reactors. Now, given what happened with FDR, what you would actually want is that we don't wanna stay at the level of energy consumption we have now. We should increase our energy consumption because we should be able to use the land more efficiently, which means maybe we only would have enough energy for a few hundred years just using the waste that we have now to power these. They're called integral fast reactors. China just built one and when Putin was over there, he toured it. And the waste apparently that they leave lasts, I forget, I think it's like 30 years as opposed to hundreds and thousands of years. So it's, it's an excellent design. They came out of Argonne National Labs in Illinois and they have a branch in Idaho. And again, we have not built a single one of them here. But that's, that would be part of Nawapa. In fact, the original Nawapa design calls for using hydroelectric power to pump all that water up into the Sawtooth Mountain Lift. What we're saying is we should use nuclear power for that and then you have the hydroelectric power for the whole country. Okay, next. What's next? Oh yeah, so this we're gonna go to. Now, I just have to say on this Nawapa question because, and people, I don't know if there's anyone here from out towards Blairstown or Danville. I was at the Blairstown City Council last week and they are still underwater. I mean, they have parts of their town that are still underwater. Danville is similar. It is actually outrageous that we do not do water management in this country. And I have to say, I did, I had a smug little smirk when Governor Christie was begging for federal aid because I and some other of our supporters had a little confrontation with him in Paramus about the Glass-Steagall Act where I said, "I know as governor, you're jammed, you're not allowed to issue credit, you have to balance the budget." But if Glass-Steagall were passed, we wouldn't be spending $20 trillion on these bailouts and there would be money for the states so that the states would not be bankrupt and we could have police and firefighters and so on. And Christie said, "We should not get any federal government money for the state. We are not gonna bail out profligate spending by the state with money from the federal government." And then you get these floods and he and Garrett are all like a bunch of babies begging for federal, and we should get federal aid, absolutely. But the idea of this pompous, you know, I won't say, saying, you know, "Oh, no, no, no." I mean, don't people in the state pay federal income taxes, for God's sakes? But we shouldn't get any help from the federal government. Anyway, so obviously, these are the kind of things the United States used to do. And I would just like to say, before we listen to this, that while you listen to Kennedy's speech and it's 16 minutes and it's really something, you should think about his vision, his reflection on the question of the past. He talks a lot about FDR and what he did and his idea of the future. And he makes very profoundly the point, he said 30 years ago, only I think 5 or 10% of our farmers had electricity and now 95% of them do. And he said, "What are the implications of this for Africa, for Asia, that we could just eradicate poverty and starvation on the planet?" Exactly. So, so I'm done, so we're gonna listen to Kennedy.
...of the president at dedication ceremonies of the Oahe Dam Project in Pierre, South Dakota, August 17th, 1962.
Secretary Udall, our host, your distinguished governor, Governor Guy, and recently my associate at the White House, George McGovern, Secretary Vance, members of the House and Senate, ladies and gentlemen. I want to express my great pleasure and to tell you what a privilege it is to leave Washington these days and come out here to South Dakota. And I can think of nothing more beneficial for those of us who work in Washington, in the nation's capital, to leave on occasions and come out and see the people of the United States. These dams, these great projects frequently are statistics to those of us who work in the nation's capital. And I can imagine nothing more beneficial to any American, to any member of the House or Senate, to any member of the executive branch, to any citizen of this country than to come here to South Dakota and realize here in this state, and in this country, there is being built the largest dam of its kind in the world. It is a source of pleasure to me as president, therefore, to come here on this occasion. And I think it's very beneficial for us to realize how frequently the American people have worked together to provide this kind of great benefit. We are 180 million different people with very different ideas on what we should do and how this country should be run and where we should go and what are our responsibilities and obligations. I think it is important that we recognize how often we've worked together to accomplish great results. And this Missouri River Basin Power System, these lights going on and off, bring to our attention the remarkable progress which we've made in one generation in this country in lighting the West, in bringing the benefits of science and technology to the people who live in this part of the United States. These are benefits which are made available to all American citizens. There could be no view of this country more erroneous than members of the Congress or of the executive or the citizens of different states to believe that what happens here in South Dakota is important only to the people of South Dakota and is a matter of indifference to the people of New England or California. I can imagine no better way than for this country to stand still if that should ever become our viewpoint and our mentality. What happens in this basin helps all the people of all the country. What happens in the east helps the west. What happens in the south helps the north. This country would not have achieved the highest standard of living in the world, the largest productive power, if we had been merely 180 million different people. Instead, free and independent and yet willing to work together, we've accomplished this and we're going to accomplish all the other great tasks that lie before us if we are to achieve our destiny. So I'm glad to be here. And I wish those of our, those who come and visit this country from abroad would come here. They come to New York and to Washington and they feel they've seen America. They should come here and to Montana and to California and to Boston, Massachusetts, and then they would see something of the United States. This dam will produce enough electric energy, this one dam, to light the city of Edinburgh in Scotland. This dam alone will supply enough irrigation area larger than a nation of Luxembourg. This dam and the rest of the dams on this river, which 30 years ago would have provided only floods and darkness, now provide irrigation and light. And though those of us who are here today follow in the footsteps of those who made it possible, we share a satisfaction and also a commitment that we must in our time make it easy for future presidents of the United States and future citizens in the 1970s and 80s to visit projects like this which have been planned and carried out in our Water is our most precious asset and its potential uses are so many and so vital that they are frequently in conflict. Power versus irrigation, irrigation versus navigation, navigation versus industrial, industrial versus recreation. Here in the Missouri Basin, the supply of water cannot meet all of these needs all the time. Accommodations are necessary. And in 1944, under the administration of President Roosevelt, a comprehensive Missouri Basin Plan was authorized to accomplish all of these great objectives. This is the fifth of six great dams to control the mainstream of the Missouri River. And I can assure those of you at the upper end of the Missouri and our good friends at the lower end, that it will continue to be our policy to regulate the storage and the flow of water in these reservoirs in the most advantageous manner for all concern that the best engineers in the world can devise. And I must say that I am heartened to come out here and talk to the distinguished engineer in charge and be informed by him that this has cost $25 million less than was estimated eight years ago and that stands as some kind of a record in the United States today. We're going to take him back to Washington and put him in charge of the whole operation We take for granted these miracles of engineering and too often we see no connection between this dam right out here and our nation's prosperity and our nation's security and our leadership all around the world. The facts of the matter are that this dam and many more like it are as essential to the expansion and growth of the American economy as any measure that the Congress is now considering. And this dam and others like it are as essential to our national strength and security as any military alliance or missile complex. When we are inclined to take these wonders for granted, let us remember that only a generation or two ago, all the great rivers of America, the Missouri, the Columbia, the Mississippi, the Tennessee, ran to the sea unharnessed and unchecked. Their power potential was wasted, their economic benefits were sparse, and their flooding caused an appalling destruction of life and of property. Then the vision of Theodore Roosevelt was fulfilled by Franklin Roosevelt. And to demonstrate how important this is as a national issue, two distinguished American presidents from New York State saw how essential it was to the nation and New York State to develop the resources of the West. And as a result, this nation began to develop its rivers systematically, to conserve its soil and its water, and to channel the destructive force of these great rivers into light and peace. And today, as a result of this, the face of this nation has been changed. And forests are growing where there was once dirt and waste and now there is prosperity where our poorest citizens once lived. If there is one outstanding story among all this which indicates the kind of progress we can make working together, it's the story of the REA and of Sam Rayburn of Texas and Franklin Roosevelt of New York and George Norris of Nebraska. Less than 30 years ago, in the lifetime of most of us here, as you know, fewer than 10% of all our rural homes in this country had electric power. Whenever I read about the statistics of desolation that in the underdeveloped world in Latin America and all the rest, we should realize that less than 30 years ago, only 10% of our rural homes had electricity. That's how quickly the face of a nation can be changed by determination and by cooperative action by all the people. And then, a farmer had no opportunity to participate in the mainstream of American life, to use labor-saving machinery, nor did his wife, did they have light or a telephone or a radio. Today, more than 95% of rural homes have electric power. The lives of these farmers and their families and their children have been enriched by living in the closest communion with the rest of our country. The REA co-ops and power districts, which have marketed this power, have been a happy middle ground between private enterprise and public cooperation. They are making the most of Theodore Roosevelt's principle that marketing agencies which represent all the people should be given a preference in the development of waters which belong to all the people. And I don't think the role of the REA is finished yet. The role of the REA isn't finished yet. And those who say that its job is finished and the job really in so many ways of this country finished are wrong. By the end of this century, we're going to have 300 million people and in the $2 trillion national income and a great responsibility as the food basket of a world which will double its population in the next 40 years. This is the prospect for the end of this century. And the key to this century is power. Power on the farm as well as the factory, power in the country as well as the city. And the need for power on the farm and the countryside continues to grow. Electricity rates must remain low. More generating capacity must be developed and soon the vast resources of nuclear energy will be tapped. This is not a choice between spending and saving for REA is a form of saving as is this dam. Hours and lives, saving farms and saving and returning to our nation's government every dollar loan with interest in taxes on new appliances and new equipment and new farm income. This program and so many like it have returned their, to the public treasuries, many times the entire cost of the program. The question which confronts us is related to the question which confronted Roosevelt and Rayburn and Norris in the 30s. And that is the whole question of our resource development in the Western United States in the 1960s. Our electric power needs will double in this decade. Our economic, military, and international commitments will require a continuing source of new energy. Surely a continent so rich in minerals, so blessed with water, and a society so replete with engineers and scientists can make and must make the best possible use of the bounty which nature and God have given us, public and private, federal and local, cooperative and corporate. We cannot prevent other people in this country from developing their resources. We look forward to the day when energy will flow where it's needed. We cannot permit railroads to prevent coal-slurry pipelines from conveying the resources of our mines. We cannot permit the mining industries to say there shall be no nuclear energy because it may affect them adversely. We cannot prevent as a, permit as a country, public and private power interests to veto each other's projects. Or if one region could permit another to say, "Another region shall not develop," if we do that- If we do that, we shall stand still and forget the lesson that our history has told us. But if we can apply to the challenges of the '60s the same principles of efficiency, cooperation, and foresight, which made this great dam possible, the same principles which cause American technicians to be sought out the world over to assist in developing the Nile, the Volta, the Mekong, and the River, then we can look to a happy future. I am proud to come here today. This is a matter of the greatest importance to us as a country. This quick visit on conservation, I hope, will remind all of us in Washington that we have a good deal of unfinished business in this area. The Secretary of Interior, Mr. Udall, will visit the Soviet Union in September. He may see a dam nearing completion, which will be double the size of our largest, Grand Cooley. The dam at Brask on the Angora River in central Siberia, already partially producing power, will shortly back up a man-made island sea of 40 million acre-feet with a capacity of 4.5 million kilowatts. And the Grand Cooley, our largest, is 2 million kilowatts. I don't want to see the United States second in space or in the development of power resources. And I think it's most appropriate. I think it's most appropriate in this great decade that we light the entire country. I think our commitment is that expressed by a distinguished senator from my own state of Massachusetts, whose words are hung behind the speaker's chair in the House of Representatives. He said, "Let us develop the resources of our land, call forth its power, build up all its great institutions, and see whether we, in our time and generation, may not perform something worthy to be remembered." I'm proud of the engineers and of the citizens of this state who helped build this great dam.